Sorry, forget about that. Please can I ask you to switch off your mobile phones on silence. It is a great sadness today that I announced the death of Christopher Stigsworth. Chris was employed in children's services as a school crossing patrol officer. Chris was 64 years old and elected to work with the authority on 23rd of February 2009. Can you please have a standing for one minute silence? Thank you. It brings to apologies for absence, I've got apologies from Gray, Jones, Lavan, Powley, Taylor and Thompson. Anybody more? Thank you. Right. Thank you. And of course we've got councillor Nightingale we have. Thank you, thank you. Anybody from Conservative? To receive declarations of interest, there's a declaration of interest form going around. Please complain if needed. The third item is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 11th of April. Councillor Thompson?
Item 77 on the minutes. Chair, I do accept that we are not expecting Hansard standard. However, the written narrative here does not convey what transpired on that day. I would suggest, Chair, if you would be so kind, that rather than alter the minutes, we have a full explanation as to why it was not possible, according to the constitution, to allow a no notice motion to be tabled. When that motion was presented, it ticked all the boxes that a no motion criteria had to. And yet the guidance given from the system was that it was not appropriate. So in order for this never to happen again, can you, Mr Mayor, please arrange for a full legal exposition as to why the guidance given to you resulted in your decision?
I would arrange for that, but as far as the minutes go, my decision at that time stands in those minutes. So anything else on the minutes? Can I have a show of hands, sorry?
We had the conversation about the motion last time, and you said it wasn't eligible for that meeting, but would be eligible for this one. I thought that meant that it would roll over onto this agenda.
No.
Whereas the minutes say that it was there, it was, it would be possible to resubmit it. So just to clarify that then, it's only motions that are already in the minutes, is it, that already? Because you said it was eligible, I thought that meant it would come to this one.
You should have put forward the minutes, put forward the motion again with notice. So that's what should have been done. So it's up to you whether you bring it forward for the next council meeting in June, where you've got to give notice.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you for the clarification.
Can I have a show of hands to accept the?
Mr Mayor, my lights have been on for a little while. Yeah, is that okay? Item 76, please, councillor masses report and all the questions and answers that followed it. My question on a sickness absence, for example, and what it's costing the authority, and I remember councillor Thompson asking a question about staff appraisals, and there were others. And all of that has been excluded from the minutes, and I would much rather it was minuted. That's all, thank you.
Eh? It's not being recorded in the minutes. Can it please? We'll update the minutes account for that. Can I have a show of hands, we accept the minutes with the amendment? Carried. To note the attendance metrics from the past meeting. Now, I have a couple of announcements to make as mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who attended through my charity ball, which much appreciated. We did manage to raise over 6,000 pounds at that event, which goes towards the charities. This is my last chair in the full meeting as mayor. I would like to thank you all for your support over the year, and I have been, if possible, I've been impartial as chairman throughout these meetings, but thank you for all your support, and I wish that the next mayor will be carried on as norm. Right? Anything from the leader?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just thank you from the Labour Group and from everybody else, I'm sure, for your service throughout the year. You've done a fantastic job going around the borough, championing the council, and I just wanted to thank you from everybody, Mr Mayor, thank you for your service. Okay, so I'm sure members across the chambers are going to be aware and concerned about the announcement from Anglo American yesterday and the days prior to that around the slowing of the Woodsmith Mine Project and its plan to reduce cash expenditure. The budget for Woodsmith will be reduced significantly, and although some work will continue, it will be very different for the rest of the year and the coming two years than we all had planned or hoped. Anglo says it's still committed to the project and hopes to restart construction in the future. However, this is a very worrying time for staff, for members, for residents on the project and anyone involved in future developments tied in with the mine. Woodsmith was also backed, many projects now in communities, and we wait to see what will happen with this investment. I met with the company and asked them for a number of insurances, which did as much as they possibly could. However, there is a number of monies that were coming in under review, and I will update the council as I find out more answers for you guys, okay? But of course, it's in everyone's best interest that we support Woodsmith in any way we can. Thousands of spectators came out to watch elite cyclists take on the East Cleveland Classic last month. The weather was kind, and the event showcased the beauty of our borough to cycling fans across the country. We now look forward to the hosting of the Tour of Britain race next month. Council staff have once again improved the quality of life for residents by successfully applying for a problem house in South Bank to be closed. Magistrates approved the eviction of tenants after hearing reports of fights with machetes, drug dealing and stolen goods. Our staff worked with Cleveland Police beyond housing to bring the successful application, and this to another example of positive work to improve our borough. Work has started on a new employment and skills hub in Loftus. The aim of the project at Temperance Square is to reduce unemployment numbers within Loftus and the wider East Cleveland area, encourage new business startups and increase the number of training and skills courses on offer. And next week demolition work will start on the former Marks and Spencer's and Goodwill's building in Rickertown Centre. If you walk past now though, actually, you can see the roof's gone, so work is ongoing. Internal works have been happening for several months, but now the external building will be brought down, followed by the construction of a new venue for the family-friendly entertainment. Four new rapid response crews will be deployed to keep our, or have been deployed, to keep our borough clean and tidy, and respond to repairs and maintenance. Starting this summer, the crews will help improve efficiency and response times across the area and allow teams responsible for routine maintenance to focus on what work has been scheduled. When not responding to incidents, they will also carry on ongoing maintenance and repair work. The council has launched a new initiative to support and encourage volunteering in our borough. We already have many people who've given up the time to improve where they live, and the new survey is asking for residents' experiences of volunteering and how they can be supported to volunteer in the future. The results of the survey will help to remove barriers to volunteering and support residents who wish to volunteer. A member task and finish group is closely involved in the project, and I look forward to this providing an excellent service for residents. Finally, following months of negotiations, the council has finalized an option to lease the Cotham Bull site for the development of 5,000 capacity arena. It has been a complex procedure at best, ensuring the council does not, ensuring the council does not carry any financial risk from the project, but we know, but we now look forward to the developers delivering what they have promised, and we'll continue to work with residents to ensure that the arena goes ahead. Thank you.
Nothing from me this time, Mr Mayor.
Which brings me to now the two reports, one for children in our care and care leavers from councillors.
Ah, that came around quicker than I thought. Being corporate parents is one of our big important responsibilities, isn't it? You know, things, it's really important that children in our communities get a good start in life, and we had an interesting briefing earlier with regard to that. This is the quarterly report that's in the papers that comes to the council, and we've provided some details about what we've done in that regard. I think before I start, I'll just mention one thing that concerned me, and that's in the appendices, in the numbers, you'll see that the number of children in care has gone up to 420. I'm advised that that's a statistical blip, just on the date that the numbers were taken, it's actually back down to 405. So we're still continuing to be fairly flat in terms of the numbers of children in care. We'd like it to go down, but unfortunately there are challenges out there. Anyway, as far as the report's concerned, I'll briefly summarise some of the things and then try and answer any questions later. An important part of this report is getting fostering right, and our fostering team are trying to recruit as many potential foster carers as possible, because having foster care within the borough is a good thing for the children and a good thing for our finances. And so we've recruited and assessed in foster cars, there's six initial assessments, and there are seven full prospective foster carers under assessment. One has successfully presented to the panel, two are due to present, and unfortunately two ended their application, one further to were ongoing. So the team's working hard to support our foster carers and things like Sparkle Moments as quoted in there and the Mockingbird scheme. There are some fabulous opportunities for some of our young people moving on. One young person who has been accepted for a place at Hull University to study law, so that's a success, and a couple of young people joined school trips, one went for three days to Italy, and she'd never been on a plane before, she loved that, and a sister went to London for three days at Harry Potter World. So, you know, it's great to see that some of our children in care are experiencing the things they should be experiencing. I'll go on to the Avyorsay group, which is important and a success, I think, for our children and families team. That takes place at Gisborne Youth Centre, which is, you know, asking the children in care themselves what we can do to improve this, improve our services. And the junction continue to work with this group, and they're moving things forward there. Onto the asylum section, our asylum through care team, which are, again, a really strong team, I think, a lot of strong teams in children and families, dealing with 22 migrant children and 46 care leavers. These are children that have got, they've faced great trauma in getting here, and we're trying to promote mental wellbeing. These are people that have, despite what we read often in the press, children that are in a great deal of difficulties. And in an attempt to acclimatise, they attend ESOL language courses at Middlesbrough College, and we've, earlier this last week, we were hearing about how we might improve those to include vocational skills as well. Most of these people are wanting to stay in our community and work within the community, integrate within our community, and they're all working hard to do that. They rarely have support networks in this country, they've left the families behind. They're afraid often of contacting the families, you know, they've fled adversity in somewhere like Afghanistan, and they're concerned about contacting the family in case they put them in danger. There are a few quotes in the report, I won't read them out, which show how much these people, these young people in turmoil appreciate the service that we offer. Moving on, our leaving care team has supported 143 care experienced young people. There's the March Practice Week, where two of our cares, you may become across Reece and Ange, who share their social care experiences and their lived experience, and they're always well received. There are some quotes in the report, two amazing young people with powerful stories, amazing and inspirational, just a couple of those. And there are some fabulous achievements from our care leavers. One has been promoted to manager after completing a leadership programme. Another has secured a full-time role in Redcar and Cleveland at data team after a successful apprenticeship. Another's moved on from undergraduate degree to a master's degree in mental health nursing at Hull University. And then with another one, who's just started studies at Teeside University in paediatric nursing. One of our care leavers attended a meeting at the Department of Education Advisory Board to support and influence changing policies for care experienced people. So, you know, our care lives doing pretty well, really. I'll move on to the virtual school, a pretty top-notch virtual school, in my opinion, providing support and guidance to all children in care so that they get the best educational opportunities possible. They each have to complete a personal education plan, and our completion rate's 100%, can't get much better than that, can you? And they signed off and expedited quickly in the sign-off of these pets with the social workers and with the teachers, very quickly. So that's a pretty good team, really. One thing that is a concern, and it's not just for children in care generally, is attendance to school. Our attendance here is 90%, 90.71%, that's up from the previous year of 87.83%. But, you know, it's still not brilliant, and it's not brilliant elsewhere in the country, it's not just Redcar and Cleveland. An even bigger concern is the high number of suspensions of children from schools. 230 as opposed to 114 last year. We, you know, all the schools are academies, and we're working with these academies to address this problem. And it's the same with days lost, I mean, they move in line, don't they? 356 days lost as opposed to 188 last year. So these are issues, you know, the attendance, suspensions and days lost are important things that we need to work with, are working with. We continue to support vulnerable children. The lead's just mentioned some of the social problems they have in parts of the borough, and we've got vulnerable exploited and missing and trafficked, tempt children. And we, you know, we're keen to keep these children safe, and with that, in that regard, we're developing at the moment a new team called our Safe Team, Safe, safeguarding adolescents from exploitation. That works well, doesn't it, for safe? Our Safe Team. And we've just had a positive recruitment drive with which, this team's just getting off the ground, so we'll be reporting back in future how well that team performs. And it's about raising awareness and helping them. I'll go on to our children's homes, No Wrong Door, continue to support three young people with great needs, really, and we're, that's another place where we can save money, is providing homes within the community, within the borough. And we're moving on that, and we'll report more about that in future, but we're increasing the number of homes in the borough. And this helps to deal with our children with complex, young people with complex needs. It helps their lives, and it'll help with the budget as well. So providing children's homes in the borough is important.
Can I ask a conclusion, please?
Sorry? Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll, well, I've got, there's a section on future, future things, which I'll leave if you like then, and we'll just, I'll sit down and answer any questions. Thank you.
Have I got a second to this report? Do you wish to speak? Councillor's report.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you for your report, councillors and others. Could I start with paragraph 6.1.6, where you say that there's a completed piece of work which is intended to help us recruit foster carers? Could you, maybe, all it says is a completed piece of work, could you maybe tell us a bit more about it, what they've done? On the next paragraph, you talk about children who may benefit from either a child arrangement order or a special guardianship order. I think there's probably not many councillors who understand the difference between those two, so I think, you know, maybe a couple of sentences in the report could have helped maybe explain it. I like the sound very much of the knockout depression boxing on Fridays. I think maybe there are some councillors who could benefit from getting out their aggression in that way, come and join in. On paragraph 6.4.5, you refer to separated migrant young people, and I'm sure councillors need to be aware that this is a change of name, that what we used to call unaccompanied asylum-seeking children are now called separated migrant young people. I think mainly because the word unaccompanied didn't really describe the situation of families being torn apart by oppression and war. And could I also address in 6.6.4 the high number of suspensions that you talked about? I know we've got Claire Mahoney here today who works very closely with schools to try and reduce the number of suspensions. From what we were hearing last week in the corporate parenting board, it seems that when children in care, when they get to 18, whether they go into university or vocational training or into employment, it seems to be at that point, most of them do well. That's, it's almost like reaching the top of the cliff, climbing a mountain. Once, if they don't fall off and they get to the top, they actually are, a high percentage of them actually succeed very well. So I just wondered if the young people themselves and the teachers and head teachers, if they're aware enough that that is, you know, if they get to that point, then kind of in a way our work is done, and if they know enough about some of those success stories. I'm not saying it would make very much difference to the suspensions, but in the cause of trying anything that might work, it seems a good idea to see how much they know about those young people who've succeeded. And the final question, and this is the hard one, so you can write to me on this if you want. I noticed in the numbers of children that came into our care over the past year, there's a graph that shows their ages, and it shows that by far the biggest category was the age zero, that in the last year, 39 infants came into care in this authority. Now going to the report that came to scrutiny from the Adoption Agency, the Adoption Tees Valley, it said that only one infant from this authority had an early permanency placement. And since early permanency is very important, either whether they're going to go into adoption or whether they end up going back to their families, it seems a very small number. It makes me wonder what happened with the other 38. And I know that the Tees Valley report itself says that they are concerned about the low number of early permanency placements. So as I said, I don't mind if you write to me on this one, but it would be useful to know why that number is so low. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Julie Hart.
Thank you, Councillors, for a lovely report there. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank everyone working in our sector, looking after our children and doing a marvellous job. Something that I didn't see on the report was the 17 children that we are taking care of within our borough from outside the borough. And what was in the report was the 174 children of ours that are being looked after outside our borough. And I'd just like to know how we work the funding out for these children. You know, do we pay for the children to be cared for outside the borough? Do other people pay for their children to be looked at inside our borough? Because I can't find this information anywhere. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Halloway has touched on what I wanted to raise already, but as a new father as of last month, I just found the high levels of infant quite disturbing, so I was just wondering if he could touch more on that.
Councillor Gemma-Hart, Joy.
Mayor, thank you for your part, councillor Sodas. I'm just going to look at item 6.4.5, it was the, it was something that came up at the corporate parent. It was the, um, it was something that came up at the corporate parenting that I attended. Um, so the part about the separated migrant young people and children, um, I heard some really reassuring feedback and, um, actually it was amazing. So, um, thank you to all concerned. Um, I just wanted to ask though, one of the things that came up at the meeting was that there was a concern that some schools could refuse access to children who were coming from, from, from this area, um, as in this area of the speciality rather than the, the geography. Like, I'd just like to check that that is the case. And if it is the case, what steps can we take as a local authority to encourage schools to, uh, to engage and, um, and help vulnerable children access their, their services? Um, another item that also interested me was that Hartlepool Sixth Form College have just been granted sanctuary status so that I wonder if that's something we can encourage, um, schools and colleges to do in our borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Sodas. Um, I'd just like to extend my congratulations to, uh, all staff who work in the, uh, leaving care team who prepare our young people so well for moving on to the next stage of their lives, whether it's climbing to the top of that, uh, grim cliff or whatever. Um, but also to assure people that, you know, once they've gone past that stage, they're still well supported. And just as we have supported our children, perhaps as they've been to university, that the councillors' corporate parents continues to support them through whatever what they choose to do in their lives. And, um, I just think we have a fabulous team. And, uh, we'd always welcome more people to, uh, attend some of our meetings and, uh, join us and look forward to our celebration event coming up soon. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, councillor Philip Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you, you indicated that you may have some information to advise members of about future investment. Um, it would be extremely interesting and welcome to understand what that is. Uh, because we are desperately short of medium and long term capital investment to address the revenue strain that this particular department is under. So happy to learn of that.
Councillor Carol, Carol and Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Sodas, for your report. Um, it's paragraph, um, six point six point four on page twenty eight. We did discuss it at the corporate parenting board, um, last week, and it's about the number of suspensions, um, of children in our care from school, which have doubled, um, on last year. Um, which is a massive, um, issue for us because of course if the kids aren't in school, then they're not learning. And we did have some explanation, um, you know, around what some of that might be due to. But maybe if you could just, um, expand on that, councillor Sodas, please, for us all. Thanks.
I have, I have no more questions from members, so I'll ask councillors of the suburb, please.
Uh, okay, I'll try my best to answer some of those. Craig, you lost me, you went through that many, so if I miss any out, uh, you can come, come back to me. Um, I'm sure I've missed some of them anyway. Um, well, the, uh, six point one six, um, the, we, we, it's, it's important, it's important that we come, it's important that we recruit more foster carers in, uh, wi- within the, the borough. Cause it costs a lot of money to use agency foster carers outside the borough, of course. Um, I, I think it's probably better if I get, uh, the team to forward copies of the work that they've done. I don't know in detail and I don't want to mislead anybody with that. So I, I, I would, I would suggest that that would be the case. And similarly, with, with, with regard to child arrangement order and special guardianship orders, I, I think that that needs to be circulated round and about. Uh, I'm not sure if I've got the next one. There was one about boxing, I think, on six point four point five. Um, I'm not sure it's necessarily the best thing to do, is it? I mean, I'm more in favour of, of, of introducing these young people into cricket. You know, a lot of them come from Afghanistan where cricket's a great thing. So, and I believe a number of them are engaging cricket and just around the corner, some, I, I, I had a anecdotal story of, uh, young people going to nets and being very good and, uh, you know, wanting to be signed up straight away. So I think these are ways in which we, in which we, uh, integrate these young people into the community. And as I said, most of them are keen to become integrated into the community and to work, work hard towards that. Um, high number of suspensions, uh, I think this is, this is, uh, the similar question to what Carolyn asked as well, uh, which is, uh, uh, in, in relation to that. It's not really very good, is it? The number of suspensions and the number of days lost and so on. It's, it's something that we've got to negotiate with the schools. Uh, I think this is, all the schools are academies, of course, and so we're, we're, we, we have to, you know, they're, they're their own, they're, they're all, they're law unto themselves in, to a great extent with this. So we can only pressurise them in this regard. I, I suspect it's something to do with their, 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 uh, that, that, their sort of stats and their numbers, you know, that people passing and one thing and another. Uh, but it's, it's top of our agenda, I think, something to address. Uh, we need to have a, uh, we need to, we need to get them. And one or two schools in particular are bad, uh, bad with regard to this. Don't think it's appropriate me to name any schools here, but, uh, I'm sure it'll come out eventually about that. So that, uh, hopefully that's addressed that one. Um, can you think of the ones that I didn't answer and come back to me at the end? Is, or do you want to come back to me now? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Permanency placement, but if you, if you need to write to me on that, that's fine.
Well, I, I, I could write to you about it, but I've got a little bit I can add to that actually. Uh, and that is that in the multi-agency children's unit, uh, at Northons, we were just, we're, we're getting new, new developments there. And we've just got a pre-birth team there where we, uh, it, it, it's very, it's very sad, but a lot of children uh, look like they're going to come into, into care before they're born even, because, uh, some of the mothers are in difficult circumstances. Uh, and I don't need to perhaps, uh, address those types of circumstances you can perhaps imagine. And so thirty nine children coming into care, somebody else asked about that, uh, Jack, I think, asked about that. Uh, thirty nine children coming in, but it's a real problem for us, for, for the children in particular. But, you know, of course, if they come into care at birth, it's going to cost us a lot of money over the years, you know, if we're purely financial terms. And we've got, we've got, uh, a thousand and one days strategy to deal with children generally before they're born. But also we have a new pre-birth team at the multi-agency children's unit where we're, uh, we, we, we could recognise where children's likely to, babies likely to come into care, uh, even before they're born and, and therefore, uh, able to get better outcomes for that. And hopefully that will, uh, we can recognise more readily and solve the problem you've got about, uh, about, uh, placing them in adoption earlier, you know, before they're born. So that, uh, the, the mother can have some contact with the adoptive parents and that, that type of thing. That's something that's starting to develop. I don't know the full answer to this. You know, these are technical terms for the professionals. So I, I will ask them, I'm sure Claire's made note of this, to, to write to you about that or to, to, uh, members more generally about that. Right, okay. Managed to get through that one then. Uh, Julie, uh, you were asking seventeen children from outside the borough coming into the borough. Assume we get some money for that, but certainly the children that we place outside the borough, we have to pay for. And it costs us a lot of money. It, it's expensive. Some of these children costing, uh, seven, getting on for seven figures per year. Uh, that's why we're, uh, we're, we're, uh, trying to answer Philip's question at the same time. Uh, that's why with, uh, using love money, we've acquired three, we're in the process of, oh, just acquired three properties in the borough, uh, which, which we're going to use for children or chil- children to stay in. And we're also, uh, we've also done some developments at the, at the, uh, around the ridings, uh, um, uh, whi- which is for asylum up, for asylum seats. And there'll be six, there'll be an admin section and then six flats above. And that will, uh, that will help accommodate, uh, some asylum seeking children who's, who are, uh, going to be leaving care as well. So, um, tho- those things together, which is what I was answering your question really, should save us a few million pound, a few million pounds, um, in terms of the revenue budget. Obviously, it's, uh, I'd be careful not to guess at how much that is. I have a number in mind, but I'd probably best not say that. Um, right, uh, what, oh, Gem, Gemma asked a question about migrant, uh, young people and schools refusing acceptance. Don't think I really know the answer to that, uh, but, uh, you know, again, it's schools are academies and I think they've probably got acceptance criteria, which, which means that, uh, you know, if they want to be like that, they perhaps, perhaps we, we can't force them to accept children, although probably we should be able to, shouldn't we? Um, and the idea of schools having sanctuary status, it seems a great idea, which I'm sure we've noted, uh, and we could take forward. Um, have I answered everybody there? Is anybody I didn't answer? Well, that was a struggle, all right. Uh, and anybody that's got anything else, just let me know and I'll try and get the answers to you. Okay, thanks very much.
Councillor, uh, I admitted, uh, item seven, uh, but there was no question from the public. Can we accept that report for, uh, councillor Sodas? Carrie.
Change the procedure where we go back and forth with the questions in future meetings rather than, no. Okay, just thought it might be easier and so everybody gets the answers.
The next one is a, is a question and answer session and it's, it's the cabinet member for neighbours, councillor Brooke.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, can I take this opportunity to thank both councillors, Barry Hunt and former councillor Julie Craig for their notable achievements during two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty three's portfolio holders. Um, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our staff who worked tirelessly to deliver services within the neighbourhood's portfolio, not forgetting the many volunteers and groups across the borough who give up their free time to support and to help keep our boroughs clean and tidy. It is a great honour to be given the lead role for neighbourhoods. Over the past twelve months, I've had the pleasure of being on the ground out and about, visiting our beautiful borough. Um, I've visited the majority of wards on multiple occasions. I've held two hundred and seven site visits with members from across the chamber to look at and discuss specific issues and agreeing suitable and practical ways forward. I've attended many public meetings and I've visited all of our cemeteries, allotment sites, parks, open spaces, play areas to better understand the challenges that we face as an authority. I'm sure members will have read my report thoroughly, so I ask that you take the report as written. Um, but I would like just to highlight some key points from the challenges we face to how we are responding. And lastly, our future developments. So challenges, just like many services across the council, neighbourhood services portfolio is facing a number of challenges. These are contributing to the budget challenge by delivering savings in street scene services, high levels of contamination and recyclable waste, uh, the impacts of ash dieback on the council trees, dealing with the cost and impact of littering and fly tipping across the borough, supporting the climate change agenda and maintaining our assets. We are responding to these challenges by making sure our services operate efficiently as possible, investigating in digital solutions such as electronic vehicle checks, routine optimisation, route optimisation, sorry, ending cap technology, generating income to protect council services, working with Waste and Resources Action Programme to trial new ways of increasing recycling. Um, we've matched the opening hours of Dunstail Recycling Centre to service demand. We're establishing a new recycling team to help reduce contamination and improve recycling rates. Uh, partner, partners, sorry, partnering with other councils to tackle shared issues. Uh, a communication campaign to inform residents of what they can recycle and the environmental benefits. Area based trials to identify recycling issues and support residents to recycle fully. Um, organised visits to Cumbria and Waste Management Recycling Facility to show the sorting process and contamination issues. We have just established two in-house arboricultural teams. Um, annual tree planting programme, planting thousands of trees each year. We inform other landowners of high risk trees that require work, carrying out surveys of the council's entire tree stock to develop work programmes and deal with the safety concerns. We will continue to investigate all fly tips for any evidence that would lead to a fine or conviction. We'll publicise the increase in fines and raise awareness of the issues relating to criminal and antisocial behaviour. Continue to work closely with volunteers and provide free litter pickers, hoops and sacks and as well as collecting the waste of these activities. We are running small sweepers on new low emission fuels, um, reducing the use of pesticides, supporting the delivery of biodiversity, no more may. Working with key partners such as Tees Valley Wildlife Trust, the Rossborough Survey of All Children's Play Areas. We're also developing a capital replacement project, programme, subject to funding. Still looking to secure external investment, extending cemeteries to create additional capacity where possible and developing work programmes for infrastructure maintenance. Upcoming service changes and improvements as part of our future service development include full replacement of our CCTV control room and cameras, planning, planning for the implementation of separate food waste collections to start from April twenty twenty six. Capital investment in Dunstail Recycling Centre to improve facilities and traffic flows. Investment in new vehicles and equipment, continuing to seek external funding. A refresh of the cleaner borough strategy. Development of a new neighbourhood services strategy which will combine all other strategies and will help provide a well maintained and safe public realm. And lastly, to continue to promote our volunteer, our volunteers' support and opportunities. Um, I would like to end there and conclude and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to take questions.
It's an answer session now and the first one is councillor Stuart Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you councillor Brooke for your report. Uh, just two quick queries. Um, the save, survey on the playparks, um, would it be possible for that survey to be shared, uh, to all councillors? Uh, we were promised it by the previous administration and it never materialised. So I think we would welcome that report. Uh, and secondly, the other, uh, concern I have is the renewal of the green waste, uh, subscription. I think all councillors had residents contact them regarding the problems they were having subscribing to, to the system. Uh, why didn't we consider an annual rolling of that subscription? Um, because now obviously we've got a call centre, dedicated call centre. Uh, I have concerns in relation to whether they'll be able to deal with day to day, uh, communications with them. So with this added pressure, um, I think we may have problems when residents again want to, uh, subscribe to the green waste. Thank you.
Councillor Brooke.
Yeah, thank you councillor Smith. Uh, yeah, the Rossborough report should have been out by now, so I'll ensure that's circulated to all members. Um, regards to the garden waste subscription, we've identified a few issues, um, that we can be more efficient and effective. So I'll discuss that with the team and we'll figure out the best option going forward for residents.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Steve Ke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, following, uh, little gore between that we had at the last council meeting, can I thank you very much councillor Brooke for coming out to Charlton's and, uh, having a look at some of the issues there which were worrying people. And can I thank you very much for listening to me as their representative and to really give them everything virtually that they ask for. You know, I think, um, it's quite unusual to find somebody in an opposing camp who listens and tries to oblige. You're exceptional. I hope I'm not alienating you from the rest of your group. They probably think, they probably think you should be doing something on me, but, but, you know, you did, you came out, you listened, you you came, you saw, you conquered. Thank you.
Here for your comments. It was a pleasure to come to the village. It's definitely one of our villages that are a jewel in the crown. And at the end of the day, we are here to do the best for our residents.
Councillor Philip Thompson.
I've got three, three questions. First one relates to recycling. And we're all disappointed, are we not, in our performance as a borough? And part of our poor performance rate in recycling relates clearly identified is as a result of contamination. And when we look at the detailed statistics by ward, no one should be proud. But many ward members should be concerned. So one of my asks is that you engage with all ward members to seek to have programmes of work that they can sign up to and work together to lower what are incredibly poor recycling figures. Now, on 3.3, you highlight the Clean Borough Strategy. And in that, there are certain aspects or subsections. And one is collective responsibility. I think I've just touched upon that. And every member in this chamber should be standing up and asking themselves, what are we doing to help reduce the contamination levels? And where is our programme of works associated with that? Our community pride is really important. In Saltburn, we have over 90 community groups registered on our database in the library. I would ask that you write to each of these and consider writing to all similar organisations in each ward, asking for them to sign up as well, if you would please. A further item, and there are many, talks about visitor, visitor destination. People coming here, but we need their respect when they do come. So in addition to attempting and reaching out to educating residents, we must have that same ethos inculcated into visitors as well. My second question relates to bereavement services. There was meant to be a report being prepared to identify further capacity within the borough to meet the ever diminishing, a demand, ever diminishing provision that we have of increasing demand. Can we have a date for publication of that report, please? And finally, on CCTV. Each time I ask for CCTV to be considered in hotspots for fly tipping, we advise it costs £3,000 for a camera, £3,000 for a pole to put it upon. These are surely historic figures. We must research what IT is available, what AI is available to assist in the campaign against fly tipping. And even without cameras, perhaps we could have larger signs that say it's a thousand pound now. And if in Saltburn, we could please have the signs because we've been waiting and waiting. Without them, the campaign is much diminished.
Councillor Brook.
Yeah, thank you councillor Thompson. Yeah, regards to contamination, I think it's all our responsibilities and it needs to be tackled on a ward-to-ward basis and not one, I don't think one shoe is going to fit all. So we've got, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. I'll take your suggestions forward, definitely write out to groups. If, if members in the room can highlight certain groups that I might not be aware of, that'd be fantastic. Regards to bereavement services, the report is being worked on. Regards to capacity of our cemeteries. I can't commit to a date at the moment, but as soon as it's available, I'll ensure that's circulated. I totally agree, agree regards to CCTV and signage. Luckily, it is something that I'm looking at with the funding that's come in to help us replace our CCTV control room and cameras. We're looking to utilise the older cameras that are still good quality to be able to assist in exactly the same situations as you highlight. Now, I believe that's everything. Yes, thank you.
Councillor Karen, Karen Kerr.
Thank you councillor Brook. We can certainly acknowledge the huge workload, you know, that the teams have. I've got four points if I may, rather be quick. Sticking with the recycling contamination, do we do any work with schools? I'm thinking particularly Belmont School because I was quite shocked to see that we're one of the worst offenders. So, but schools generally, because it's often the children who educate the parents, isn't it? Secondly, community pride and volunteering has been mentioned a couple of times already. And Alec mentioned the volunteer strategy, which is a really important piece of work for us. And it's hurtling along, chaired by councillor Corley. It will really help us to maximise the impact on volunteering throughout the borough. Thirdly, I was really pleased to see the extra resources going into trees. Now, the trees are an issue for us on Belmont. We're talking about huge trees right next to people's houses that are causing anxiety. I know we're not a priority, but the residents of Belmont do expect a service. Councillor Berry, he's left the room at the moment, so I can say what I like. But we first went round Belmont in July last year with the then Arboretum. And we've been backwards and forwards quite a number of times, but we still haven't had any work done unfortunately. But hopefully with this extra resource, we can look forward to, to that in Belmont. And lastly, you mentioned only briefly the community safety partnership. I found it quite difficult to find information out about the partnership. The minutes aren't readily available. It's a key partnership for it because it reflects what's possibly the number one priority for many of, for many of our residents. I understand it's outside the council's committee structure. And it seems to me though, it's, it's not plugged into the council really in any way at all, as far as I've been able to determine. It's, there's no feedback and it's not subject to scrutiny as far as I can see. So I'm wondering what your thoughts on that are. I mean, how do members, for example, have an input into the community safety plan? And because under the legislation, it is the local authorities' requirement to convene the partnership. I would expect us to perhaps have councillors on that partnership. And you are there as, as chair, but I believe that there are no other councillors on that board as, as councillors. Okay, thanks.
My, thank you. I'll try and keep up if I miss anything, can't please do. Regards to schools recycling, we do, do work in our schools. Now, I can't name individual schools that we work with, but it's definitely one of my priorities that we get out there more. It's all about educating our children and if we start at the bottom, it naturally feeds up through their families. So that's definitely something that we'll be looking at getting out there a lot more. Trees, yeah, to, totally get it. One of our priorities, investing our trees. We've got 600 tree backlog of maintenance, plus we're dealing with the huge ash dieback in the borough. So it made sense to reinstate our tree teams. Now, we have just finished recruiting, so if we just give the team a bit of time just to get their feet on the ground and then we'll start seeing a lot of success coming from that. Community safety partnership, I agree to an extent. So it's mainly for partners to come together. So we have a number of community safety groups at lower levels for the localities and then they feed up to the executive safety partnership in which I chair. Possibly it's something that we need to look at, so I will take that forward. The minutes should be readily available, but yeah, I'll, I'll look at that and see how we can fit that in a bit better. I think that was everything.
Councillor Graham Cutler.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Adam, for a brilliant report. I echo what councillor Thompson said and councillor Kerr, that the recycling rates are absolutely very disappointing. And especially in our area where we live in, in East Cleveland. And the big issue is we have so many back streets, houses back to back. We've got Errington Street, Jackson Street, Coronation Street in Carling Howe, Gladstone, which are, are big, big, what I feel hit problems. The, the trial that you did didn't hit into any of those streets, they hit the housing estates. Marshall Drive in Broughton, we don't, we don't have what I call massive problems there. But it's the backstreet areas that I believe are the problem. Broughton Ward councillors have experienced this ourselves because we've done it for the last four years. And we've seen that on our household collection day, in the Brickyard area, which is Jackson Street, Errington, Charles Street, there are approximately 120 houses there. On the household day, we have an average of 80-plus bins out on that day. The following week, when it's recycle day, we're lucky to get 20 bins out on that day. What does that echo to everybody that that's a problem in these back-to-back street areas? And I think the main reason for it is possibly that they don't have a recycling bin. Or are they certain how to use one? And that's what it goes back to. It goes back to education. And I think we should be reaching out into these areas. We should be going and knocking on the doors. We should be educating them on how to use them because probably they're frightened of what to put in because it won't get collected. And that's what it needs. It's so easy to put it on social media. It's so easy to put it in a leaflet and drop it through the door. But I'm afraid I think it needs something more serious because of the seriousness of this. I think we need to go and knock on the door, make them realise what goes in that bin, have they got one and how to use it correctly. Do you not feel that this proactive reach could be to an advantage to educate them, to encourage them and make this recycling figures a lot better for our communities? Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, thank you councillor Cutler. I do, I've got to agree, recycling is one of our biggest issues. We have ran a number of trials and we're not going to stop there. We're going to continue. It's about education. But as, as you understand, it's, it's resource, so we have to make sure we've got the resource to be able to be proactive. I'm all about being proactive and not reactive. But yeah, we, we, the teams are working incredibly hard to identify these locations and do them in manageable sizes so that can, we can really target them and educate. So yeah, we'll take that forward. That's not a problem.
I've still got 10 questions to go forward, so I'm not going to take any more questions after Neil Argreaves. We carry on now with Kurt, you.
Mr Mayor, thank you councillor Brook for your report. I've got to say, my question was about recycling rates. So I have two questions. One of them was about recycling rates. You've largely covered that and I think you're spot on really. It's education, 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 isn't it? In Southbank where 90% of bins are contaminated, I mean, where, where do you start with that? It's, it's clearly an education problem and not people, you know, just neglecting it. The other question was on CCTV. You've already mentioned, I think, the levelling up partnership. And the question more specifically was on, is the plans for, as well as the camera replacement programme, as well as the new control room, is the plans for new cameras in antisocial behaviour hotspot areas? The reason I raise it is we've obviously had from the PCC over the last few months, hotspot patrols in hotspot antisocial behaviour areas. In Spencer Beck, the wardens have been attacked and all sorts, the council wardens. It's, it's really been horrendous. And last I heard, that was one of the one hotspot places which wasn't actually improving even with the patrols. You know, these wardens are having a terrible time and there isn't a CCTV there to sort of, when they've been attacked, to, to, to give that to the police or whatever. So it was basically just a question of whether there'd be more CCTV cameras coming. Understandable if it's not because I know funding, it's already been committed. That's all from me. Thank you.
Yep, is it, I've already covered recycling, so if I just go straight on CCTV, that's great. So yeah, obviously the money's coming. We've, we've just come to the end of procurement, so there's still a lot of work to be done. But yeah, I'm, I believe that we will be remapping and looking at where our camera infrastructure is. And like I said to, I believe councillor Thompson, we'll be utilising as many of the original cameras that are still good quality to increase our coverage.
Councillor Karen King.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor for your report. It's becoming a bit a habit of something happens to me on the way here to this meeting that prompts my question. But I refer to point 7.9 in your report, which seems quite light. It's just, we're doing stuff. I'd like to see in possibly future reports, if we can have a little bit of data behind that and not to steal councillor Martin's question three, it's on a similar subject. Knowing that there's benefits that cycling brings to not only the health of people getting out and exercising, but also to the environment in reducing pollution and car results. Would the cabinet member agree to look at areas such as Kirkleitham Lane, which I've just driven down, and the cycle lane, had about 27 cars and vans parked in it. It is a car park. What's the point of having cycle lanes if you can't actually access them? It was also stopping cars, you know, realistically passing two ways. So just asking if you could, with maybe your enforcement team, not only look at Kirkleitham Lane, which is obviously not in my ward, but just experienced it firsthand, but look at the other cycle lanes and just see how many of them are being used as, as free car parks and obstructing the public going about their business. Thank you.
Noted your comments regarding 1.9. I, I get that. And yeah, we, we can look at that. Once again, comes with resource, but we'll, we'll highlight it as the priority.
Councillor Preston Leroyd.
Thank you. I've, I've had my cycling question stolen, so thank you for asking that. First of all, I just want to talk about collective responsibility. It was raised by councillor Thompson. My approach is slightly different. I do think when you've got a position such as you have as cabinet member, irrespective of how well you perceive to be doing that job and irrespective of what happens in the background and extenuating circumstances, there is a responsibility and the standards in public life of which you probably didn't attain previously. And as such, you should have stepped down from the collective responsibility of a cabinet role. That's what standards in public life demand. And indeed, I did exactly that in January 2022.
I don't think that's relevant. Have you, have you got a question?
I have now, but I wanted to say that. Sorry, what used to happen was that we had members who were real Labour Party members and socialists. Doesn't appear to happen anymore. So what we've got in the report here at 3.3, there are about minor, really minor reductions in carbon output where this incinerator that's being approved, which burns 400 tonnes of rubbish, it links rather nicely into a figure we saw yesterday of a rather poorly attended review of a very important document, which came to the planning committee. But it stated within it that 17 to 19% of all waste that's connected, collected then goes towards dry recycling. So not only have we got a problem in terms of collection from the bin, but we have like a cultural problem in terms of the amount we're burning. So there's certainly issues there, 3.3. 3.6, I appreciate that there are financial pressures on councils of which you're not going to be able to solve at the level that you're at. They're far higher than anybody in this council.
Conclude your question, please.
Yeah, well, I'm going through them. I've got four of them. The next one is, Mr Mayor, the next one then would be, you've got the reduction of grass cutting and it's not been a good year really for grass cutting so far this year. It wasn't last year anyway. So I want you to just understand a little bit, when you talk about reduction of grass cutting and the principal road network being cut, what exactly that entails. And would that definitely not impact on, say, Mask or Broughton or elsewhere in the grass cutting there? There's a bit about biodiversity strategy in there. It's not 100% clear to me what that strategy is. When I'm contacted about, well, is this particular patch included in the biodiversity strategy? I never know quite what to answer to the resident. So that could do with clearing up. 4.3, that is a question. That is a que, the question was, can you clear up, please, with regards to the biodiversity strategy? I'll put question marks at the end if you'd prefer councillor Brown. Play equipment, would, is there a consideration in terms of replacing the, the play equipment through grants? Question mark. And then the last one is 8. Um, and then the last one is 8.3 where it talks about missed waste collection? The number's very high. Do we know if they're unique callers or are they the same people calling in who are having repeatedly missed, um, waste collections? And for councillor Brown's benefit, question mark.
Right, you'll have to come back to me if I miss anything out there because I was a bit confused myself. Biodiversity strategy, um, doesn't sit with myself as a portfolio holder, but obviously my team's feeding to it and deliver it. Um, so I'm not fully briefed. Um, regards to the biodiversity strategy on a ward level, um, it's, it's based around work with ward members, as far as I believe. So it's not a, a size fits all. Currently, we've only, we've only come across No More May, which was proposed with, uh, ward members and agreed with ward members. I don't think the biodi, biodiversity strategy is actually in place yet as it comes to the next cabinet cycle. Does that answer your question? Yeah. Um, play parks, we are looking for external funding. We're looking at, I'm, I'm very keen to do a play park strategy. We, we need investment. Um, currently, it's about £50,000 an annual budget we've got for replacement of equipment. And we're forecasting we need roughly about 700k annually going forward. So it is some that the teams are looking at and trying to identify external funding, using our local groups to be able to tap into funding that we can't to help support local play. Uh, missed bins, it's, it's a mixture of genuine missed bins and repeated missed bins. The teams have been tasked to identify these ones that are repeat offenders and to address that going forward. Was this? Yeah, so I believe we're reducing it by one cut a year, but I will confirm that. Um, and it will be our main infrastructure, um, with, with verges and won't creep into our estates. Yeah. Can you just?
Can, can I conclude that question? Let councillor Paul answer.
I, I, can the councillor confirm what he was asking? Because I'm, I'm not sure.
Remember the graphic correctly. So just in terms of a strategy to drive that up, um, and what's contributing to that percentage being so low? So the overall sum, I expected you've got one blue bin, one green bin. You'd at least see 50/50. Why was it only like 19, 17, 19%? It was a very small part of the pie chart.
Yeah, I'll have to come back to you on that because I believe I'm getting briefed on that tomorrow. So is that a new system, this, the figure that's just come in? Yeah, yeah, I'll come back to you on that, trust me. Is that everything?
Councillor Ian Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you councillor Brook for your report. Uh, my questions relate around paragraph 3.4, collective responsibilities, and to some extent 3.6, managing expectations. Could the cabinet member, uh, tell us what the council has done? What he's doing and what will be done to ensure that the other partners mentioned in paragraph 3.4 fulfil their responsibilities in keeping the areas of our council clean and tidy? Now, in particular, Beyond Housing cuts grass in all areas highlighted in the G I S map that is marked as their responsibilities. Last year in this chamber, we heard from Beyond Housing that they weren't sure what areas they were cutting and that they would resolve that with their partners. And that has not happened. It is, eh, there are, there are areas in Olmsby Ward which are not being cut by either council or Beyond Housing. And the grass is getting extremely long. Dogs are doing their business in it and the, and their owners are not picking it up in the long grass. In particular, in Alwynton Court, um, it's an area marked on the G I S as a Beyond Housing area to be cut by Beyond Housing. But when, when, when one of the occupants of the houses there contacted Beyond Housing, they were told, no, it's not their responsibility. They contacted the council and were told by the council, it's not their responsibility. So there's obviously a mismatch between what is known. They also talked to the people doing the actual work and were told by them, oh, they couldn't cut the grass because it's not on their map. I think it's a bit remiss of both council and Beyond Housing that almost a year later from that meeting, this is the, this is item that's still not been resolved, both in my ward and I suspect in other wards as well. Could, could we ask you to arrange a visit, site visit perhaps, with yourself, Beyond Housing and ourselves and try and resolve at least this issue as quickly as possible? Thank you.
Yeah, so as you stated yourself, it's about partnership working. Obviously partners that hold sole responsibility to maintaining their own land. Um, this is the first I've heard that we're having issues this year, so I'm quite surprised. Nothing's come across my desk regards to grass still not getting cut. So I'll be very keen to meet with you with Beyond Housing in your ward and identify and resolve.
Um, Adam, thank you for your, your report. Um, just want to make a little note. On page 46, you've got two 3.9s. So I'm going to say 3.9 and 3.9 here. Um, so first and foremost, thank you for bringing on the rapid response teams for fly tipping. It's a bane of all of our wards. We get tortured off all our residents because obviously the message's made. Um, and I watched your video and thank you for coming to our ward and making that video and kick Alex's fence. Hopefully he'll kick it down quicker than he's getting it down. Um, but you mentioned strong enforcement and I'm glad that we've increased the fines from 150 to 400 and 400 to a thousand pound. Do we have any figures yet on prosecution rates and how much that's actually bringing in and how many people have been prosecuted on that? Uh, because like, like I said, it, it's a massive issue that's affecting all our wards. Um, also just, these are really, really, really quick questions. Um, have we ever thought of maybe doing some type of, not amnesty, but like a, a cheaper collection? I know Middlesbrough did it a few years ago regarding one, one, one week every quarter, get your things collected for 20 quid or something like that, just to reduce and get everyone's rubbish out in one go or a skip or something like that. It might be something that we could possibly look into in the future. That's all that was. Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot the question. I was too busy nodding. Um, right, where were we at? Enforcement? Yeah, so I have asked for an updated figures on this of where we are with fines issued and successful convictions. Once I've got that through, I've got no issue with sharing that with members. Um, what was the other question?
A month or quarter, you know, like type of collection?
Yeah, it's something I'll note and we'll take forward and we'll, we'll look at. Obviously, as you're aware, with the council's financial challenges, we have been on a full cost recovery. Um, so we, we've just got to wait, wait out and see if it's achievable. Yeah, no worries.
Mayor, um, thank you councillor Brook. Loving your work, big report. Um, really, really quick on. So the, in recycling, 37% of, um, of the stuff was household waste. Is that helping shape in our food waste recovery? And if so, how will we extrapolate that? Because obviously we need to be looking at that. Are we doing that?
Yes, it's currently a piece of work that we're still working on. Um, and I would assume that it would come to environmental scrutiny. So yeah, we'll keep up with that and then update when we can.
Mayor, thanks for your report councillor Brook. Um, in 8.2, you mentioned the very high volume of inquiries that you get from residents. I presume that some of that, uh, great volume is because it's harder for the council now to address the smaller jobs that, uh, the residents inquire about because of the cuts, because of, you know, staffing issues. Um, I had a conversation with Brian Archer about this and he said he wanted to try and create a kind of, um, rapid reaction team, a, a small, um, multi-skilled team that would be able to go out quickly and address, uh, some of these needs. Do you have plans to make such a team?
Yeah, so we're four rapid response teams. Um, I have made an announcement. We've already launched them. Um, recruit, it's additional staff and some new additional, so we've just finished recruiting. The teams are getting set up. We're waiting for new vehicles, new equipment, and they'll be fully up to speed by the beginning of summer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report, Adam. Uh, mine's a quick question about, uh, 7.7, the target hardening. It's not the CCTV, it's the off-road bikes. And as you know, off-road bikes is a huge issue in the borough, but mainly in our area, CS6, and predominantly from your ward, coming through our ward and stuff like that. And, you know, so it, it, I just think it con, it deserves more than two paragraphs in your report. It's such a big issue. So what I want to know was what more is the council going to do to try and prevent or to stop this sort of thing, like working with the police and the authorities and things like that? What plans do you have?
Yeah. Yeah, the reas, the reason for two lines is it's a piece of work that's still very new and it's, it's across partnerships. Um, it's a piece of work that we're working on in the executive community safety partnership. Um, it's a bit difficult for operational reasons to get information out there, but w, once a strategy is in place and we know the responsibilities of each partner, then members will be given a full update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you councillor Brooks for your report. And I know how hard it is to stand there and give it. So I have two questions. Uh, one is after our, was it No Gro May or whatever, but what, No More May? Uh, after that, are we going to go back to, uh, cutting certain areas that are starting to look a bit rough? And like the, I'll just say for instance, the middle of Saltburn Roundabout is like you can't see from one side to the other. Now it's dangerous. It's like, I think there's a tribe of pygmies in there. I'm not sure. But, um, I would, I would like, or are we going to leave what we've left there? So are we going to go back to cutting that? That's one. The second one is I'm just going to pick up on councillor Cutler. Because we, we've had that, the, the situation with the bins in terraced housing. I mean, we are rural and it's the little villages, but it, it, wherever you are, whether it's east or west, terraced housing brings a different type. We've had a lot of problems, Broughton Ward councillors, with rogue landlords and it's always been a big thing of mine. And I believe that, that, you know, Graham goes up and down them streets every day, Martin goes around. You know, we, we see what's happening and the turnover of what the people that are in there, we'll never educate them because they're, they're there for a few months, the, the rogue landlords take on, all they care about is the rent. They don't care about how many people put the bins out or anything like that. But they're, they're responsible for a big part of, uh, the tenants that put in. So is there any way we can look at making the landlords responsible for their properties? Because they, once they put that tenant in, the tenant's responsible thing, but that's still their house, that's their property. And if the bulk of our, our lot are coming from, uh, bad tenants. And so could we please have a look at, uh, making the landlords responsible? And I, I suppose it even goes on to housing associations. They're private landlords. You know, and if they decide to miss certain areas and do something, we should be on to, on to them and making them pay instead of us. And, and God bless our, our ever decreasing workforce who, you know, do a brilliant job, always have done, Doug Gray and his team and all that. I cannot, I've always praised them. We've, we work a lot with them, don't we? And we praise them a lot. We have a, a good workforce. Uh, and it's a shame to get people that from out, you know, we're getting the blame for not doing things. And so could we please look at that, Adam? And thank you very much. You're doing a good job.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Barry. Um, yes, councillor, I'm sorry. Yeah, now you're welcome. Um, yeah, so No More May, um, we, we do plan to return back to normal schedule from June. However, there, there's been a number of sites identified by ward members that they'd like to trial under biodiversity to keep them more natural. Um, so we, obviously we're keen to work on that to support biodiversity. But it, it's all in consultation with ward members and obviously your residents. So if you want it to stay the same, we're happy to have a discussion. If not, we can return it back to schedule. Um, yeah, you, you pick up a valid point regards to rogue landlords and a high turnaround of tenants. It's something that the teams have already raised. Um, yeah, and it's possibly good, we'll possibly do a piece of work with our housing standards team to see how we address that with landlords and tenants going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor Brook for your report there. Um, so my point's about 7.2, the community safety groups. Uh, so it's quite surprising. This is the first I've heard of, of these groups. And surprisingly, Holly Headfield's in there, which is in my ward. Um, so my question really is about like, who represents the council on this board? And how do we contact them feeding anything we get? So obviously we get contacted by residents all the time. They've got ideas, how we can improve and all this. We, we tell them to report to the police. But is there a way that, that, you know, if the council's represented in these groups, how can we feed in what we're hearing so the council can represent that on these groups and improve everything for our residents? Thank you.
Yeah, um, yeah, going back, I, I failed to mention in the last question that obviously these are operational meetings and obviously, as you can imagine, it's quite confidential. So the safe, the safety groups in localities are based up of partners and lead officers within them, within them localities that then feed information back to the executive safe, um, community safety partnership. Um, and then that's when we, we work on strategies and how we, we look to tackle them. Um, the five, obviously all major partnerships are on. What I'll do is after this meeting, I will contact my service lead and we'll, we'll put together exactly how the work and what the remits are and obviously get it out to members so you have a full understanding of how the work and what the remits are.
Thank you councillor Brook for that report. Can I assure our hands to accept the report, please? Carrie. Without coming to section 10 to consider its motions, I have one motion for councillor Grogan, uh, seconded by councillor Argreaves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I sent all members a brief demonstration how this works, so I'll go through it. Um, I'd like to see a commitment to have more litter bins across the borough, especially in places like in Kirkleitham, Chorground, Underwoods. Keen place for dog walkers, myself and my fellow ward councillors. Get asked about that quite regularly. Um, which, which is keen for dog walkers. They currently have none. In addition to approximately 1,000 bins which are already in place to keep our beautiful borough clean and tidy, this should always be the top priority for our council. Although the council has experienced some budget cuts and issues, and I believe the provision of more bins will help reduce the amount of littering in the borough and the cost of dealing with that problem. Any bins, however, will hel, only help to solve the problem if they are regularly emptied and maintained and around the area that the bin is cleaned. Bins can fill up quickly, particularly in popular tourist locations, like in Redcar on the weekend, and can be damaged for a variety of reasons. Providing simple systems to allow for public to, to report full and damaged bins will help keep council response quickly and effectively to keep these facilities available for public use. A scheme, a scheme similar to that is used in North Tyneside council, Glasgow city council, Cheshire, Western Chester council would have a relatively low cost setup and would help effectively manage the litter bin collections, especially in our summer months when the borough sees a spike in visitors. Accordingly, this council recommends to the cabinet that investigate the provisions of additional bins where evidence suggests they're needed and consider the introduction of a scheme using existing technology to assist the public in reporting full or damaged bins, including attaching a QR code sticker to the bin, which can be scanned by, with a smartphone and will identify the exact location of the bin. Linking these to the council's bin and waste services section on the website and if possible, providing information on when the bin is due to be emptied, therefore avoid the need to report a bin that's due to be emptied on the same day or the next day. And regular updates provided to elected members on progress to monitor how the scheme is working. If implemented, the QR technology could have more possibilities in the future to streamline our services included. Other assets such as issues with benches, broken child play apparatus. child play apparatus, bush shelter damage, even street lights if they, if they aren't working. We must be open to the idea that will help the council be efficient as possible with the help of residents and visitor engagement, all starting with a picture on a smartphone. Thank you.
Councillor Brook now to the next question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to table an amendment to the motion, if we can dispute that. Thank you. So it's just, it's just the paragraph starting with accordingly, it currently reads this coun, this council, I think, I think that's typed wrong. Well, basically, it's to replace investigates the provision of additional bins with this council note to the already ongoing works and recommend, recommends to cabinet that it continues to review the provision of additional bins. And where it says considers the introduction of to replace with will investigate the possibilities of introducing. That's basically the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank councillor Grogan, sorry, for bringing it, for bringing it to the chambers. But to save everyone's time, we're already doing this and it's already ongoing. So I suggest maybe we can just accept councillor Grogan's wanting to be involved, Adam. And then maybe if we can set up like a little task and finish group with councillor Grogan involved. And then that way it just saves any motions, because we're already doing it, Peter, and we're already looking at the QR codes and stuff. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 for, for bringing it, it's good, it's thinking. So, Adam, could we do that? And then just save everyone's time and paper? Well, it's too late on the paper, but...
I'm happy to do that if Peter Grogan is, councillor Grogan, sorry.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to work with you guys to make this borough a better borough, keep things efficient, so yeah.
I think, I think we're both pulling our amendment and motion from the sounds of it agreeing a way forward with a start finish group. You look like me and I'm like, I would do that.
I'm going to ask councillor Brook to remove the amendment, and backed by councillor Brown, and the original motion to be removed by councillor Grogan. And they will establish a task and finish group to look at the, to look at it.
I'll leave it up to you, Steve, you're the monitoring officer, you're the one that makes the rules.
The current position is we have a motion that's been successfully proposed and seconded. We also have an amendment that's been proposed and seconded. So currently, technically, we should be debating the amendment. If councillor Brook wishes to withdraw his motion, then he can do that as long as the second and the meeting agrees. And similarly, councillor Grogan, if you want to withdraw your original motion, then that can be done as long as your second and the meeting agrees. If I'm honest, I'm not quite sure what is being proposed and agreed between the two of you.
All remove our motions and sit around the table and have a task and finish group?
If you're both happy to withdraw the amendment and the motion, then the procedure is that councillor Brook can seek to withdraw his amendment. If you're happy a second, then it's down to a vote of the meeting really as to whether they're happy that the amendment's been withdrawn. So it's, so do you intend to withdraw your motion, councillor Brook?
Am I speaking? Yeah. Can I just, clarification, I think it would be best for the chamber if we do withdraw both motions and go through a task and finish group, rather than agreeing a motion which then just brings it to cabinet for a report. I think it's better for everyone if we take it to a task and finish and work together.
Can Peter just accept the motion? Sorry, accept the amendment?
So the amendment has been withdrawn by both the proposer and the second. Are you happy that the amendment is withdrawn? Show vans, please.
Of the whole council, therefore you can't just do little deals between yourselves. The proposal should be put to the council to cancel these things if you, if that's the wish.
Amendment, seconded by councillor Brown, and I'm asking the full members to agree to withdraw that amendment. And then it was up to councillor Grogan to also withdraw the motion and we go to a task and finish group.
Shall I clarify the procedure?
It's asking for the full council to approve that the motion and the amendment was withdrawn, and to approve we go to a task and finish group to discuss the full, the full, the call question of the QR codes, et cetera. We are happy to do that at that stage, if that's what you wish, so wish.
Withdraw the amendment, the motion. As long as I'm included in this task force, that's all, I'm happy to do it.
If I can just, yeah, if I can just clarify the procedure, members. Councillor Kay's right, there does need to be the consent of the meeting for both of these to be withdrawn. So it's clear that councillor Brook is seeking to withdraw his amendment, as is the second. So the next task really is to seek the consent of this meeting for the amendment to be withdrawn. So the mayor was asking our councillors' content for the amendment to be withdrawn. And that seems to be carried, Mr. Mayor. So it's also clear now that councillor Grogan seeks to withdraw his motion. Our second supports that. Does the meeting agree for that to be withdrawn?
Okay, thank you. Item 11 to appoint members, no changes have been received. So it now goes on to the seven questions in item 12. And the first question is from councillor Kay to councillor Earl.
When individuals, businesses or charities provide defibrillators on Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council's buildings or land, don't you, as a responsible cabinet member, believe that this council has a duty to keep them in workable order by providing regular checks and services?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councillor Kay, I'll just give a little bit of a background to members on these defibrillators. So the installation of community public access defibrillators, or CPads, are funded and arranged by members of community groups, parish councils and charitable organisations. Following the installation of a CPad, there is a requirement for a named guardian to carry out regular inspections of the equipment and cabinet once a week. This person will also be contacted if the device has been activated, check the machine and order replacement parts. When the council are contacted regarding the installation of a CPad, we will always work with the groups, supporting them in improving safety within their communities. However, this is on the understanding the relevant groups continue to maintain and monitor the use of the CPads in their community. Separate defibrillators are held within public facing council buildings, which are maintained and monitored by council teams, which would be made available for any building user or member of the public. So to answer your question, I do not believe that the council does have a duty to keep these CPads in workable order by providing regular services, checks and maintenance. And this duty falls to the named guardian for those CPads.
By this council, but the defibrillator in full view, next to the front door, is neither checked nor serviced by anyone. This council is wrong to believe that it is looked after by Lockwood Parish Council. I have phoned the clerk twice and been assured that it is not the responsibility and was not put there by the parish council. If some, if someone suffers cardiac arrest on Lingdale High Street and dies because through lack of maintenance, this defibrillator fails, the finger of blame inevitably and rightly will be pointed at this penny pinching council. Should not Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council keep all defibrillators on its buildings and land, fully checked and serviced to afford continuous life-saving protection at minimal cost to its citizens?
Thank you. I have information about that particular defibrillator in Lingdale. As I've already said, these CPads have to be registered. I have been told that this CPad is not registered. We therefore cannot, cannot trace who the guardian is. And we will look at what we can do about either removing that CPad or making further investigations to find out who the guardian is and who originally installed that piece of apparatus. In terms of Lingdale High Street, I believe that, you may correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that there is also a CPad outside Lingdale Pharmacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I ask the question, I took part in the CEO sleepout, which is relevant to this question. And with all your help from members and people at Redcar in Cleveland, we raised over £22,000. So thank you for everyone that's helped out there. So councillor Earl, the Women's Rough Sleeping Census Report, the first of its kind in England, aims to give more accurate picture of what women's rough sleeping looks like in the UK. Solace Women's Aid has worked in coalition with Single Homeless Project, London Councils and Homeless Link to deliver the first national census into the scale of the women's homelessness. For the first time, councils across England came together to undertake gender-informed outreach to understand the number of women rough sleeping and their experiences differ from men. The new report estimates there could be nine times more women sleeping rough in England than the official government data suggests. The census published on the 7th of May found more homeless women in 41 local authorities than the government's official annual snapshot data recorded in the whole of England in 2023. None of the local authorities in the North East took part in census. Charities behind the report have urged councils in the North East and North Yorkshire to get in favour of the census in September 2024. There's obviously a link that all members have seen. Was the, was the council asked to be involved in that census prior to that one?
Thank you, and thank you councillor Grogan for raising this matter. It's a very important matter, actually. The short answer is no, we've, we've investigated this and we, we hadn't, we hadn't received a request to participate in the survey. I read the survey myself and had a look at it, and it appears that a lot of London boroughs were contacted, boroughs in the south of England, some in the Midlands and in Greater Manchester. But we, in the North East, I'm not sure that any of us were actually contacted. We certainly weren't. We, we are fortunate in, in this borough in that we do not have a large number of rough sleepers. But I absolutely agree with you that one rough sleeper is too many and one vulnerable rough sleeper is certainly many too many. And I'd like to reassure you that in terms of priority needs for housing assessment, a pregnant woman or a person with whom she resides or might recently be expected to reside, they will be assessed on a priority need. Also, a person with whom dependent children reside, could be a female again, a person who is homeless as a result of that person being a victim of domestic abuse. So these individuals will have a priority need for housing. But the short answer to your question is, yes, we'd very much like to be involved in that census and also learn from the information that's shared and also with what other councils do. And thank you for your question.
To councillor Brook.
I like most of our fellow councillors, councillors and residents are sick and tired of illegal and dangerous parking with the Redcar in Cleveland. When reporting to enforcement, we are told that the officers will attend, but it's often too late, which is no fault of the run. When speaking to the team, I was shocked to learn that there were only 12 enforcement officers in the Hall of Redcar in Cleveland, which means they are, they are four to eight staff on duty at one time. Enforcement deals with everything from parking, fly tipping, littering, dog fouling, untaxed vehicles and certain antisocial behaviour. How can this small team deal with the pressures we put on them and, and offer the service that our residents deserve? This is the only service which theoretically pays for itself through revenue raised issuing fines. No matter which ward I am in throughout the day, I will see 10 to 20 cars daily parked in the other lines. It's potentially £700 to £1,400 a day on less revenue, parking on the other lines a £10 fine. Investment in additional enforcement officers will more than likely pay for itself in the revenue raised for the council, in turn keeping our streets safer and residents happy. Will the cabinet consider increasing the number of enforcement officers so that we can improve services for our residents and at the same time increase the revenue for our council?
Yeah, thank you councillor Martin. We do have a very dedicated enforcement team that cover a number of issues which you've just highlighted there. The income derived from enforcement activities does not cost, doesn't cover the cost of the operating this team. It contributes approximately a third of the overall expenditure. A full cost recovery model has been operated by other local authorities and private sector enforcement companies, which drives a different approach and culture within those organisations. Income generation becomes the prime concern with targets given to enforcement officers and activities focused only in areas with large numbers of fines that are likely to be secured, which then alienates other communities to be left. This approach can result in a lot of negative publicity when it becomes apparent that the key objective is to just generate income rather than educate and change behaviours. The council is committed to continue to look at external funding opportunities to help bolster the resources that we have available and will continue to work with other partners to address areas of concern as effectively as possible.
Sorry, just a brief one. I prefer us not to find people for parking illegally. I'd prefer everyone to park as is rugby parking. But obviously, it just doesn't happen. Daily, everyone, quite a lot of council members today have spoken about it, but there just isn't the officers there to deal with the situation. And obviously, it was
And obviously, there was one occasion last month where I think the enforcement officers were in Eston for about an hour and eleven fines were handed out in one hour. So there is money to be made and there is education to go out there, but we need to do more than we are physically actually doing now. And I understand pressures on the council, but we need to do more to make our roads safer.
Yeah, I agree, but like, like you say, financial pressures, resource funding that's been withdrawn from the council, I know in the past has directly impacted our enforcement, and we have seen jobs go. But you're right, it's about education, changing behaviours, it's not about a money-making scheme, and we need to get it right, but we will, we will look at it and work forward.
Councillor Brown, last full council in response to my question, you spoke of Teesworks lawyers advising against a veto to stop PD Port's court case, which they took out against PD Port, shall I add, which the taxpayer ultimately unpredictably lost. Your decision not to veto cost the taxpayer upwards of three point two five million. Why were you following the advice of a Teesworks lawyer who had little to lose? And did you consult independent advice before your dreadful and wrong decision?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just like to remind the entire council that I asked, which wasn't minuted and I supported Julie Gillespie, that they negotiate at all costs. But, Mr Monitoring Officer, I refuse to answer any more questions from councillor Leroyd on a couple of points of code of conduct. As I was walking into the chambers, he screamed in front of many witnesses that I was in Ben Couchin's pocket, which I, I absolutely think is disgusting behaviour from the self-imposed narcissist over there who is recording this and only records his own question. He doesn't record the answer, so this is why I'm having to have my phone on. And on social media over the last week, he's also claimed that I spent my time apologising to Ben Couchin. He's also claimed in this building in a video that the Labour and Conservative group have come to a deal to remove him from the chair of a planning. I'd like to confirm with the Conservatives today that no such thing has taken place, has it? Thank you, leader. So please, Tristan, apologise publicly for misinforming the public and I'll answer your questions.
Yeah, absolutely. The reason why I record the calls is because you're so loose-tongued that you give away information that's not available to the public, so I did. No, no, you, you answered the questions, but then you slip up. For example, the information I was given with the guys to the roundabout, I just...
Sorry, do you have a supplementary question?
Yeah, well, I still haven't had the answer to my first question. So my first question was, why didn't you seek independent advice with regards to the PD Port's case? Or indeed use your veto to prevent that loss? Because there are six, there are, there are, there are, sorry, five Labour council leaders who have opportunity to scrutinise.
Can you confirm, is that your supplementary question?
My supplementary question, I want my first question answered, rather than a tirade of false accusations.
Mr Monitoring Officer, as I said in my first one, I refuse to answer more questions from this particular councillor until I have a public apology or evidence to show that we've done a deal, okay? Now, if you do lose your chair of planning next week, that'll be if everybody thinks, has Tristan got a good job?, question mark.
Right, well, how on earth do you follow all of that? And I, this is a very specific question, which has closed the heart of people in the east part of Redcar. Can the cabinet, sorry, it's to councillor Richardson, thank you, Mr Mayor. Can the cabinet member commit to the fifteen thousand residents of Rees Redcar in regard to the library building at three three eight Leburnham Road and advise which of the current full RCBC services will be available? And that the new opening hours will mirror the current opening offer over five days a week once the building is taken over? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The question's a bit misleading because the current offer is that it's open two days a week and it's closed five days a week. But what I can say is that as a councillor, we're absolutely committed to providing an excellent library service to the residents of the borough, despite facing severe financial pressures. A number of fantastic community groups have expressed an interest in running the Burnham Road Library. And it's expected that with this community support, the building will actually be busier, have a variety of uses and groups that people can attend and become a community hub in the heart of the community. Officers are now in the process of working with these groups and as we ask them to demonstrate how they will be able to continue to provide a first-rate library service. But we do know and we've already committed to the book service staying and being invested in in the stock. The current opening offer is two days a week and it's anticipated that with the successful community group, they will replicate or increase this level of provision. The leader met with the Friends of Leburnham Library last week and is really pleased to say that one of the volunteers is keen to be involved in the new service and the shaping of it. Okay, that answer your question?
I'm sorry if you found it a little bit ambiguous, but the library is actually open for things going on more than just the two days. But I would like to know really, what would it come under? How would it be branded and what exactly would the offer be? Is it a library or is it going to be a community hub? As other places have different branding, that would be very helpful. And if people are, whoever takes it on, whoever uses it, and we know that Friends of the library and the cemetery do use it for events and things, if they have any problems in the area and any difficulties with using equipment in there, which we're told could be used, as I was told by one of our health previous CDOs I could use but I couldn't access, will there be help and support from the council? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I don't know what people's problems would be, so I can't say yes will help with everything, but the idea is to have the building open more, doing more, serving the community more. We're working up those proposals and I can't commit to what a voluntary organisation will do till we've had those conversations. But what I can say is we're soon to announcing it and I think he'll be really pleased with the offer, as will the residents of East Cleveland. East Redcar, sorry, Redcar East. I don't know the possible future name.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My, my question is this one. Why, in respect of specific requests for specific refinements to be made to Saltburn Library opening times, were details of these requests not taken away by senior officers having been made at the appropriate scrutiny committee and at cabinet and never communicated to those considering the final opening hours timetable?
The senior officers in question no longer work at the council, so it's not possible to say categorically whether they fed through comments verbally or didn't. If they didn't, it's a regrettable oversight. The opening hours for Saltburn Library cannot be taken in isolation. Library hours are interdependent on one another and any amendments to Saltburn proposals would have a ripple effect on other library opening hours too. The proposals were refined as a consequence of a thirteen-week consultation process, including specific sessions for elected members, and the final proposals do seek to accommodate as much of the feedback received as possible, but clearly it is not possible to satisfy every stated request or requirement of individuals.
Having heard the answer, I do. So, we understand that the senior officers, two in number, are no longer with the authority. However, I do not wish to speak ill of the dead. But whether those officers are currently employed or not, there is an ethos that we as elected members should be prepared to understand that exists. So, the discussion, Mr Mayor, is not that there are arguments that might justify taking into account other aspects of the library service in the borough. And one understands that there is waiting to be considered in any final decision. But the point of my original question was that an understanding was given to members at scrutiny, a formal committee of this authority. An understanding was given at cabinet to the representative of the scrutiny system. And that understanding was never transmitted to those making the considerate decisions. So although there may be justifiable arguments to be put forward for one side of the case, if the points made for the other side of the case are never made, then the case will never be properly considered. That is the fundamental principle of the failure of these officers to communicate. So my question supplementary, Mr Mayor, is simple. Will the cabinet and the senior officers of this authority undertake a review of the ethos of member comment that should be honoured, respected and transmitted for the value that it has and taken away when decisions are being considered as a result of documents presented to members that are not finalised?
I can't say that they never fed back any comments because they're not here to answer for themselves and they're not here for me to ask. So I don't agree that they absolutely didn't feed anything back, but I can't answer for them. I'll look into whether we'll have a review of the ethos of member comments being fed back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could I just, on a point of information, say that the information that was given to members, to board members, by those conducting the consideration? Yes, I appreciate that. So I put, I put my reply in writing because the information that's just been supplied, unfortunately, was not correct. Question seven. When will Redcar and Cleveland Council be reviewing its policy of only carrying out maintenance work on areas that are on flat ground?
Yes, thank you councillor Thompson. You highlighted this a while ago when I came down to visit you in Saltburn. The council's approach is to evaluate each slope on an individual basis to determine a safe method of working on it if required. This approach was implemented in 2019 following an incident in Skinning Grove where a ride-on was slid down a slope. Working on slopes can pose several, several serious risks, especially in construction and other outdoor activities, which include landslides, falls and slips, stability of heavy equipment and rockfalls. Neighbourhood officers were asked to identify all slopes within the geographical area. The slopes were then categorised according to gradient condition and stability of the bank side and required activity. Suitable methods and control measures would then be determined. These would range from anywhere from mechanical cut to remote equipment or in some cases excluded from work based on safety concerns. I've already highlighted the areas that you've raised with me. If these haven't been reevaluated, I'll ensure it gets done again and we'll feed back to you.
My supplementary question is, when will I be able to get a time to answer my first question, which says, when will? So the reply is that it will be being considered, but not when. And the reason it is important, Mr Mayor, that we do get an answer to when is that the impression being given to all volunteers, and the leader made a comment at the beginning of the meeting how important volunteers are to the welfare of this community and to assist in delivering the council services. Currently in Saltburn Valley Gardens, there is a directive which says, from immediate effect, no work will be done other than on a flat surface. So the conclusion from all the volunteers who've spent the last fourteen months doing work that was required to contribute to the removal of the risk register is giving the impression that this council is a member of the Flat Earth Society. So my, my supplementary question is quite simple, Mr Mayor.
I think I've got to call it out at times unless you can conclude your question.
My supplementary question, quite simply, Mr Mayor, is when will the review be conducted?
That's a book.
Yeah, sorry if it wasn't clear in my answer, councillor Thompson. So just to confirm, we can't review a policy that doesn't exist. So we do not have a policy that states that we will only work on flat ground. If that's the information that officers are feeding back, I apologise. As I say, there's no blanket ban on working on slopes. They've all got to be evaluated and all approached differently in the work method. So we'll bring it round and I'll get a date where we're going to evaluate the areas that you've identified with me directly and see how we move forward.
Just for one minute. It's positive. Honestly, I'm not talking to Tristan, it's all positive. Right, sorry about that, I shouldn't have done that. Right, just on behalf of Redcar and Cleveland Council, I'd like to congratulate a certain John Sampson on reaching fifteen years' service in April 2024. The work of the long-serving experienced staff at the vital council success is vital to the council's success. And I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you personally for your loyalty, effort and commitment in reaching this milestone in your career. This is a significant achievement and we are very fortunate to have a dedicated and experienced colleague like you who helps to ensure we will continue to deliver excellent services to our residents. Thank you, John. It hasn't been about you, thank you all.